We call this evening's meeting to order. Roll call.
Bates?
Aye.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholtz?
Aye.
Please let stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hellstrom, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
America, we love you.
Our moment of silence, please, remain standing. From the preamble of our state constitution, it reads, "We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of this universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." Thank you, please be seated. May I have a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bates?
Aye.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholtz?
Aye.
Before we move on, Mr. Illingworth, I believe you have some comments that you would like to make now or at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, when we get to the Board of Education reports, I think would be appropriate.
Alright, thank you. Okay, now we have public comment. Please be aware that any personnel or individual student matters are considered confidential under Colorado law, and it is out of respect of the law and our employees and students that we require those discussions take place privately in executive session. It is requested that individual comments be limited to three minutes or a total of 15 minutes for a particular topic. The intent of public comment is to give the Board of Education the opportunity to hear your comments. However, the Board will make no decision nor take any action on public comment during this evening's meeting. This is Kelly, who do we have up?
We have seven people who have signed up, so everyone will have a chance to speak. You'll have three minutes, and at one minute, I'll give you a warning. But we're still going to draw to do it randomly. First one is number four, Aaron Hellstrom.
Good evening. I rise tonight to talk about the American birthright and the status of our country. When we look at what's going on in this nation, we see a lot of people that are protesting for terror in our streets. I never thought in my entire life that I would see people, Americans, saying that killing and torturing and murdering innocent is civility, that it's right. And so that took me to think, how could they get there? How could they get to a place of thinking America is this great state and this great even? And I submit to you, it's because our history has been lacking. In the Marine Corps, when I went through boot camp, one of the first things you learn about is the history of the Marine Corps. And the reason for that is just because if you don't know your history, and you don't know what you stand for and what you're about, you'll fall for anything. And we need to know what we stand for as a nation, who we are as a people. And I believe in the American birthright. I think it is the right thing for the right time. Because our citizenry, our children, need to know why they're Americans and what it means to be an American. To go around saying that burning a baby in an oven is okay? That's sadistic. We're a free people, and it's because we have God-given and illegal rights. The right to life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. So owning things, we'll call it free market, is a good thing. Yet we have communist and socialist agendas being propagated in our schools. Since this board has taken over, things have changed, and I hope it continues to go in the right direction. But if you don't stand for what America is about, regardless of what others say, we'll lose our identity and we will fall. There are tough times coming as a nation. We will have attacks in America. How we come together as a community sets the standard for how we'll survive. We'll either live and rise together, unify, or divide and fall. So I want to say, please, push forward the American birthright. Our students need to know what it means to be an American. Just like I need to know what it meant to be a Marine in the wars and the battles that we fought. The Battle of Belleau Wood, where we got the nickname "Tofu Hunter," Devil Dog. Look it up. It's an illustrious history. And I'm proud to call myself a United States Marine, but even more so, I'm proud to call myself an American. And I'm grateful for what this board is doing, and I hope it'll continue to do it. And lastly, over 40 colleges, Ivy League schools, no longer require SATs or any standards to get into it. Harper, Yale, Vanderbilt, Dartmouth, look them up. It's on our Department of Education website. So the argument of these are bad things, our kids can't go to school, is not a true statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hellstrom, for your service to our great nation.
Thank you.
Next up is number two, Shannon Valaro.
Good evening, President. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Good evening, President Rusterholtz and members of the Board. I'm excited to be here tonight to help promote the first Youth Pass BOCES Parents Academy. We are very lucky to have a special education director like Marcy Palmer. She has started a parents' academy to help parents and guardians to navigate special education for their child. On Wednesday, November 5th, at the Youth Pass Cultural Center, there will be an introduction to special education, taking the mystery out of the process. There will be an opportunity for parents, guardians, community members, and teachers to ask questions about how to navigate special education. I encourage people to attend. While I'm here, I would also like to encourage the Board to look into who from Woodland Park represents our school district on the Youth Pass BOCES Board. My suggestion is to appoint people that have experience teaching or working in special education. I would like our Board to come to the Parent Academy. Mr. Witt, it would be really nice if you were there and showed how we support special education. So thank you for your time, good night, and I hope to see all of you at the first Parents Academy. Thank you.
Shannon, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Could you repeat the date and time of that again?
November, it's Wednesday, November 15th, and it's at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's the location?
At the Youth Pass Cultural Center.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, number five, Kitten Walker.
So I just want to talk about the election. How this election was a perfect example of how our constitutional republic works. The citizens got to have their say, and the results, you know, showed what the citizens voted for, what the citizens believed for, and I think it was a great, great thing to happen. So thank you for running, all of you. Seth Bryant, Mike Knott, and Keegan Barclay, and Mick Bates, Cassie Kimbrel, and David Illingworth. You really exemplified our country's constitution and the fact that we are a constitutional republic. So I look forward to what's coming up, and it's just going to be great. And Director Illingworth, these two years were a preparation for your next assignment. So, thank you. Oh, and I just have to pray. So thank you, Father, for this time that we get to gather and we get to look at our great country and when we do things the way our constitutional calls, that it works. And I just thank you, Lord, that we are blessed and that our directors are a blessing. And I believe that our new director, Keegan Barclay, will be a blessing to our community. So it's going to be a learning curve, as it has been for all of you, but
One minute.
It's going to be, it's just going to be good. So in Jesus' name, I thank you, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Kelly, next.
Next, number three, Nicole, is it Roch, Rochley? How do you say your name?
Broccoli.
Okay. Can you repeat it one more time?
Oh, broccoli.
Okay, thank you.
Not that we confused with the vegetable.
Yes. I almost said broccoli, then I'm like, oh gosh, she's going to think I'm calling her a vegetable.
No problem.
Now I will never forget your answer.
I actually get to speak. This is great. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I guess more people are afraid about the snow than the school board. I also wanted to speak about American birthright. So many things have been said in these past few weeks and months leading up to this election that I felt I really want to read up on it some more, and I can only encourage everyone to do that because there's been stuff that's been said and repeated over and over again that I simply can't agree with looking up the facts. In developing American birthright, the civics lines drew heavily from Massachusetts and Florida's social studies standards that get a lot higher marks compared to the Colorado standards that are currently in place. The Colorado Republican Board Member Joyce Rankin actually conducted a word search on both opposing standards. That's very illustrative. American birthright mentions the Constitution 111 times, compared with 24 times in the Colorado civic standards. The word "God" 12 times, as opposed to "never" in the Colorado standards. The word "flag" 12 times, as opposed to once. And the word "American" 374 times, compared with just 68 times in the Colorado standards.
Can you turn, I can't hear you that well. Thank you.
So many misconceptions on American birthright have come up and are now being repeated in nearly every discussion around surrounding topic. One of the things that we frequently hear is the fact that Woodland Park is the only district in the nation to adopt American birthright, and so our students are treated as guinea pigs. This is false. American birthright was largely based on other existing state standards with a conservative focus, such as the Massachusetts and Florida social study standards. Since its publication, many other states across the nation have adapted or are in the process of adapting their statewide social study standards in line with the principles of American birthright, such as Florida,
One minute.
Virginia, South Dakota, Ohio, Louisiana, Indiana, Arizona, and Tennessee, among others. Even though Woodland Park is so far the only single school district to explicitly adopt the American birthright social study standards, many states across the nation are successfully teaching students based on the same principles and standards, although under a different name. It's also being said that American birthright is censoring teachers and pushing a religious conservative agenda. It's bringing politics into classrooms. This is also false. According to its website, "American birthright aims at teaching students to identify the ideals, institutions, and individual examples of human liberty, individualism, religious freedom, and republican self-government. Assess the extent to which civilizations have fulfilled these ideals, and describe how the evolution of these ideals in different times and places has contributed to the formation of modern American ideals."
Time.
It claims to represent an ideologically neutral and apolitical history. If these elections have taught us anything, then it is that we are the ones to decide whether these topics divide us or bring us together. Thank you.
Next.
Next is Kelly Hunsaker.
Hi, my name's Kelly Hunsaker. I've lived in Woodland Park since 2002. We moved here for my husband to teach in the schools. We moved here from out of state and fell in love with this community almost immediately. I was very sick when we first got here, and this community adopted us. They took us in. People from every church in this town brought meals to us or offered me rides to doctors when I couldn't drive. Students told their parents about what was happening to their new teacher's wife, and the community picked me up and took me and held us tight so that my husband could teach. My husband fell in love with teaching. Before he was a teacher, he went to law school. He had no desire to be a lawyer. And so I stayed practicing law so that he could go to school to become a teacher. He loved his job. But he's not the only one. The educators in this district have always been passionate, and they have put all of their efforts into their jobs. Most of them get up in the morning and work on school, go to school and teach, stay after school and coach, go home and prepare the meals, and then they grade papers and they plan lessons, and then they go to bed and start all over again, every day. I know because I've watched my husband do that for 22 years. I just want the teachers of this district to know that I've taken vows twice in my life that meant something to me. Once when I was sworn into the military, once when I married my husband. Both of those lasted decades at this point. My vow to the teachers is I will continue to say how great you are.
Number seven, Cynthia Bear.
Good evening, you guys. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I wanted to speak on truth, and I would like to see that everyone that speaks before this board speaks truth. So I want to make some corrections that were misspoken a month ago. I want to say, first of all, the data will show that there has been no significant redistricting of our school districts in the past 15 years that would affect these statistics that I'm about to give you. There have been no major factory or employer closing to reduce the availability of jobs. If anything, jobs have increased due to Caris Bible College moving to the area in 2014 from Colorado Springs. Next, Colorado Springs Christian Schools opened the elementary school in Woodland Park in 2005 and expanded with the sixth and seventh grades by 2020. Those are the only major factors that I could see that would influence the population of Woodland Park, as well as the number of students that we have in each of our schools. However, with that said, and I have data, I have graphs that I can share with you, and I published in the publication called Kingdom Chronicles. Thank you. With that, I would like to describe my findings. The Woodland Park School District convened for their monthly meeting on Wednesday, October 11th. The line began forming before 4:00 p.m. I don't remember how many people were here, but it was evident that a lot of people cared about Woodland Park and our school district. The atmosphere at this board meeting was also very tense. There were many spirit-filled believers here who showed up in force. There were also many people who spoke their opinions about our school district, but spoke in error. And I'm speaking in particular about a person who identified herself
One minute.
librarian. There was a news crew in attendance. Notice these people are not here tonight when the news crew is not here. So it's important, when looking over, we need to notice that in the history, that the school district has actually decreased in numbers since 2003 at its height. So they said, they allege, that the reasons why the school has been losing students is due to the school board. However, the majority of the members of the school board have only been in office for two to four years. So in that case, it has nothing to do with the school board members who are here. It has everything to do with something else systemic in our school. And I say that we need to find out what it is. We need to find out what's causing our numbers to dwindle. Is it programs that we have in the schools? Is it our teachers, which I think we have some of the best teachers in the nation? I think we represent the best of the best in education.
Time.
We need to find out what's causing this and not make up lies to say that it's the school board. Thank you. Have a great night.
And the last speaker for this evening, number six, Logan Roos.
We are at a very dangerous point in time, both in the U.S. and in the world. The U.S. is facing its most dangerous threat yet, and it is disinformation. It is information that is manipulated and cherry-picked. It is information that is not complete, but is only used partially so that it can be used to further an argument that it doesn't actually support. I am very disappointed tonight to have seen many, many arguments made that fall into that same category, that they're just, they're straw men. Honestly, I don't have much to say. And that's mostly because I'm speaking to you guys, and I don't really have much to say to you guys because I don't respect any of you. You have given me no reason to respect you. You have treated my community, my friends, my staff, my teachers, the students, everyone here with disrespect. By not listening to them, by lying to them and saying, yes, we're doing this, and then it turns out that's not what's happening. You should be ashamed of yourselves, every one of you. You make me ashamed to say that Woodland Park is my hometown. You have destroyed
One minute.
this town. And let me be clear. There may have been ups and downs with student population, district population, alumni population. That happens. People move. People want to come here, some people don't want to stay here. It happens. But what I can say for sure is that there has never once in the history of this school been a one-third teacher turnover rate in a single year. And that is because of you guys. That is because of you, Cassie Kimbrel. That is because of you, David Illingworth. That is because of you, Ken Witt. That is because of you, David Rusterholtz. That is because of you, Suzanne Patterson. That is because of you, Mick Bates. And there are others that are responsible as well. I wish
Time.
to see so much more leadership coming from my school district that I loved. You have failed it. You have failed me. You have failed this town. And frankly, you have failed the students.
Okay, last one. Thank you all for participating this evening. We will move on to the consent agenda. And just a reminder, the consent agenda items are routine matters that don't require discussion prior to approval concerning things like new contracts, resignations, personnel issues, which also include the previous minutes of the school board meetings. So if I can have a motion to accept our consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bates?
Aye.
Illingworth?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholtz?
Aye.
Onto Roman numeral six, discussion information. On our first item is student recognition by Mr. Witt.
Yes, we have had a significant amount of a number of events and accomplishments over the last couple of months, and so we're trying to take a period fairly often to recognize some of the accomplishments of our students and throughout the district. So I'm delighted to say we have a significant list here, so bear with me for a moment while we read through some of them. The Woodland Park High School Marching Band earned second place in 2A at the Colorado Bandmasters Association's South Regional Competition, receiving their highest score in 11 years. Woodland Park High School Boys Soccer made school history by securing their spot in the state playoffs. Before this year, the program had never competed in a state tournament. Woodland Park High School Boys Cross Country Team competed at state for the second year in a row, and the girls' team competed at state for the third consecutive year. Both teams placed 13th in the state, bettering their placements from last year. Individual accomplishments include senior Stella Schroeder placing 16th in the state for 3A girls. Woodland Park Middle School Cross Country Teams both competed at the state meet. The boys placed 18th and the girls placed 11th. Each team had a runner in the top 10. Seventh grader Titus Swan placed 7th in the boys' competition, and eighth grader Landry Proll placed 8th in the girls' race.
Congratulations, Lacy.
Woodland Park High School Cheer Team won first place at the Colorado Blueback Competition. They also won their division and grand champion with the highest overall score in the entire competition at the Grizzly Cup. They accomplished this by outshining numerous 4A teams. Graduation rates for the high school this year are still at remarkably high levels, and there was a 1/10 of a point increase, but that's just a statistical anomaly. But the important part is that we're still at 73% right-here percentage rate this year, which is outstanding. National Beta Club inducted 23 new members, joining the 25 current members at Woodland Park High School. Students were selected based on their academic performance and character. And Woodland Park High School Forensic Team hosted the Pike's Peak Invitational, where a number of our students reached the final stage and placed in the top 10. Congratulations to these top 10 winners in their respective categories. Jackson Murray, first place in humor. Caleb Kizior, second place in humor. Elena Starr, third place in poetry. Quinn Morris, fourth place in humor. Gianna Goss and Courtney Little, fourth place in duo. Naomi Hopkins, Naomi Hopkins, fifth place in drama. Kevin West, sixth place in humor. Eden and Eliezer Fuqua, sixth place in duo. And Emma Hannah and Felicia Longenfeld, third place in duo. Thank you. I know it was a long list, but-
So we swept humor? You said we took first, second, third, fourth, and sixth place in humor?
Let's see if one was missing there, but that's right. First, second, fourth, and sixth in humor. First, second, fourth, and sixth.
Yeah, it just seems to me there's got to be something funny about that. That was a joke. Well, thank you so much. That's wonderful. I like those kind of reports. All right, on to the next one. Real estate update. Mr. Salt. Now that I'm thinking humor, I'm thinking about jokes, and I wanted to make one about this Aaron coming up, so I'll hold back because I'm really not that-
You're welcome, too. There's plenty of jokes you can make. Give us one second while we get connected back over here.
While we're waiting, I heard that we have among the staff at the school some, a highly competitive lady that drives, I've heard it from multiple sources, and that that's one of the reasons that her kids are so good at running. She just is always pushing and pushing and pushing, and quite the competitor herself. So congratulations. That was really good to hear. Are we ready?
We are connected. Yep. So what you'll see in this next picture, there we go. This might look familiar. This is a parking lot that is across the street from Gateway Elementary. Many of you drive past it as you come up to these board meetings. What's interesting about that parking lot is we built a parking lot on land that did not belong to us. And so we are in the process of acquiring that land. The property owners are donating it to the district. This has been a process in place for several years, and they haven't been able to come to finalize that agreement. And so we are scheduled to get the title policy hopefully later this week. Sure, we're working out a couple of details, and then we'll actually get the deed signed over before the end of the year. It'll be so close in the summer.
If I may take a point of privilege, I just want to say, it's obviously always a big risk when you have property that you don't own and someone else's, that you're at best of someone else. And while this has persisted, this problem has persisted in the district for a very long time, I was delighted to see Aaron mention the problem and jump on it and get it resolved in three, four months. So thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the property owners, the Karns, for their role in this.
Say their name again.
Karns. Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron, I do have a question. If it's appropriate to answer?
Yes, sir.
If it's not, then don't. How did this end up happening, that the school district built a parking lot on someone else's property?
That is a question that I don't have the answer to. I will say that this, this is the third property owner that has had this property with the parking lot on it that we are trying to get resolved. So when I say it has persisted for years, we're talking like 20 years that it lasts in the process.
Okay. Are you able to say anything about how it was resolved or under what conditions it has been or in being resolved?
Yeah, let me answer that, if you don't mind. Just, we're very grateful to the Karns family for offering to give us the land, which they own, but they, they offered to give it to us, and the only concession they asked was that they be able to put some construction equipment on the road beside it when it's time for them to build a retention pond. And we thought that was an extremely generous agreement from them, and we're deeply grateful.
Wow, that is great. That is great. So thank you for spearheading that and seeing it through. That's really good. Thank you. Okay, next, we have action item, which is this year's, coming year's calendar, 24-25 calendar. And do I have a motion to accept this coming year's calendar?
Second? Or, no, motion, sorry. Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this year's calendar, though?
If I may make an introductory statement?
Please do.
This follows the same form as the calendar discussion that you had last year, and so we're continuing the same program with the same arrangement of dates and days off, et cetera. Every year you have to approve a calendar, so we're trying to follow and not, not make changes too frequently. This is the same calendar format and the same form as you agreed on last year.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about it?
I'll just say, I think this is a good calendar. We've been using it this year. What I like about it is it's been rebalanced since last year's to be a bit more parent-friendly, so I'm pleased to continue with this calendar.
Anybody else want to, just any discussion about it?
No. I, I've, I've got a grandson that has been a part of this calendar, and things have worked out well.
I remember last year when we discussed having this calendar, Ms. Cassens went through a survey of parents and of teachers, and because the issue was that there was almost a week off every month, and my concern, or our concern as a board, was how do single parents deal with this, having a whole week off and holding down a job? So I thought that she did a good job surveying everyone. There was a bit of discussion with, with teachers and with the parents, and so evidently it has been, I haven't heard much feedback from it, but anyway, I, I thought that, I wanted to make sure that we had listened to the concerns of people about that, so.
David, I can tell you, as, you know, my wife and I are both working parents, four kids in school, and to us, it's been a big improvement in terms of being able to balance, making sure somebody's always there to watch the kids and things like that. It was hard, even for a two-parent household, when you had basically a week off every month. It really did become difficult to plan how that was going to get done, so I can give you my feedback on it. It's been good.
I'm glad to hear it. I don't know how, how you do that. We have a bunch of kids, too, and that, so I'm glad that it's working well. Okay, well, we have a motion on the table. We ready for a roll call? Ms. Kelly.
Bates.
Aye.
Illingworth.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterholtz.
Aye.
Board of Education reports. Is there something else?
No, it's a thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to take a second to make a comment about the election and the future. And so I'll start with the caveat that, of course, it is the job of the Teller County Clerk and Recorder's Office to tally up all the votes and make a decision, and my understanding is their process is still ongoing in terms of military ballots, and, you know, there's a curing period for certain ballots and things like that. So we respect her process. After all of us who were involved in the election feel the same way on that, and hopefully she has results finalized by November 15th. But the board meeting is tonight, and so I wanted to take the opportunity and congratulate our leaders in those races, because, you know, the process is not necessarily final, but if the results remain as they have been, then I want to congratulate Mick Bates, and I congratulate Cassie Kimbrel, and I want to congratulate Keegan Barclay. And I, and so I do think this will be probably my last board meeting, and I didn't want to go away with, you know, just, it'll all be certified, you guys come back and everything, you know, in another month or so, so I wanted to go ahead and take the opportunity to congratulate each of you. I want to also take the opportunity to thank you. I want to thank you, David, Sue, Mick, and Cassie. It's, it's been, it's been a great two years. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I want to thank our administration, Mr. Witt, and your excellent team for the work that they are doing and continuing to do, and I want to thank our hard-working staff who make it all possible and who are the soldiers in the battle to help educate children and turn them into fine young Americans. So I especially want to thank Kelly Haven, the board secretary.
Thank you.
Kelly is a consummate pro. Kelly is one of those, those linchpins, you know, one of those people who makes it happen, one of those people that it's hard to imagine serving on the board without Kelly. And she's seen it all through thick and thin, and Kelly, you're going to be a tremendous asset to the board in the future, especially to Ms. Barclay. She's gonna, she's gonna know that she's lucky to get a chance to work with you. So everybody's gonna agree on that one. So thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Illingworth, I just want to say, I've been on the board a short time, but it's been an honor to serve with you. It is clear to me that you are here for the benefit of our children, which is, I think, the reason all of us sit here. So I want to thank you for your service, and I'm sure you're going to go on to bigger and better things, but in the, in the interim, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I'm very proud of what I've been a part of here. Oh, thank you. And I'll just wrap it up by saying that I've been very proud of leading the charge on change that we were elected to do in 2021. I'm very proud of helping to open our first charter school, as well as protecting parents' fundamental rights in the education of their children, and focusing our schools on teaching knowledge, not nonsense. And the American Birthright Standards are a very big part of that, and the, the lady was very accurate when she says that the American Birthright Standards is taught in a lot of districts under different names and things like that, so nothing especially unique about them, except that they are one of many great standards that districts can look to in terms of making sure that our kids are learning the history of America, the history of the world, something that's going to be really key growing up. And I just want to close by saying that it's, it's been great. It's been a great ride, and I've really loved it. It's not necessarily easy, but I hope you guys will welcome Keegan into the board. I think you guys are going to be very lucky going forward. You guys are a good crew, and I wish you all good luck, and that's as well to Keegan. Congratulations, Keegan. I think you're going to really enjoy it, and just everybody should remember, it's about service to our kids and our community. I'm sure Keegan is going to exemplify that in a great tradition of service. So thank you, everybody. Good luck to everybody, and God bless you all.
Next. Ms. Kimbrel.
Well, I don't have too much to say, other than I am excited the election is over, even though it's not certified yet. I want to thank you, David, for serving the board, and congratulations, Keegan. And, you know, I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just enjoy the next few weeks with your family and friends, whether you're gathering around their table, your table hosting. Just enjoy next weekend with your fam, family. Thanks.
David? Sue?
Hey, it's been my pleasure to serve with you, Mr. Illingworth. It's been a fast and bumpy ride, and we have secured the highest pay raise in the history of Woodland Park School for our teachers. You have always reminded me that we're here to serve the parents. The election is, is through the voting process, and we represent the parents, and, and we also have agreed, we, we disagreed twice. I remember both of them. But it's been an honor to serve with you. I'm proud that you led the way on the first charter school and for change, and you've always put the children first, and you've taken a lot of hits for that, but it, but it's been my pleasure, and I still remember both of those. We disagreed.
I only remember one, so I don't know.
I disagree with David, so who knows?
Mr. Mick?
These are tough acts to follow. I want to congratulate all of the candidates that have run in this race. We're blessed to be in a country to be able to do this and have freedom of speech and have the ability to vote. It's been a bit challenging. We've still got a ways to go, but let's, we appreciate the system, don't forget that, and we'll get through this and move ahead. But most of all, we should be very proud that we're in a country that we can do this and do it in a fair manner. So congratulations to all, win, lose, or draw, and we will forge ahead, as you all know. Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
Please.
Congratulations, Keegan, and the new elected director. We're looking forward to working with you.
Well, it's kind of hard to follow up on everything here. This was quite a time, quite an election that we all went through. I thought that everyone worked very hard on this, and it's always such a letdown when you lose something like this, when you've worked so hard, whichever side you're on. I would have been honored to serve with any of you here, so I look forward to serving with you, Keegan. I'm going to miss you, David, all the times we've bumped heads in here. I've learned a lot from you, and it's been an honor to serve with you. And I, I know that you'll do well on your new endeavor coming up, so I, I know you will do well. You know, sometimes this is my last full meeting that I will probably be leading as, as president, so I'll have some things to say next time when I come back, some things that I've learned about all of this, and things that I could have done better, wished I would have done better, but I do look forward to this next term and to, to serving with this new board of directors. So thank you all for coming. I pray that you have a great Thanksgiving with your friends and families, and we'll see you all again here next month.
Drive safely. I don't know what the roads are going to be like, but I like the wind.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So what should do it?
Second.
You gotta let me get the last one.
Start over.
So.
Second.
Are we ready for a roll call?
Yes. Bates.
Aye.
Illingworth.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterholtz.
No.
Aye.
It's the earliest we've gotten out here.
Well, weather's coming, so this is handy.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for, uh-